So, yeah, let me just explain just a little bit as far as the Peru Commission, just for the matter of. The Peru Economic Development Commission is a three-member committee made up of two members from the city representatives and one from the county. So specifically, Mayor, the mayor has the point, which is the chairman of the city council has a point, which is the chairman of the board, and the county's appointment in the council is the president. So with that, the statute requires that there be a chairperson and a secretary, and then the third person is just a member. So at this point, it's a nomination for chairperson or secretary. Now, if you have a point, you will just be the one.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do you need a secretary?
Yes.
Okay. A motion for me to be the chairperson and Erica to be secretary. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Your questions?
Um, the third item on the agenda, I put new business, and that would be the presentation of the executive director of Miami County Economic Development Department.
Yes, thanks again for agreeing to serve on the committee. Let me first of all say that this committee, and again, it is required by its primary commission is to review and recommend certain opportunity of use of obligations that the city may take part in, where from those obligations proceeds from that obligation, whether it's a bond, or whether it's like typically those people who are funding the money. Those proceeds go directly to a third-party person to offset costs of construction, of course, to use as incentive to encourage development in the city. So what you will be doing today is considering a resolution for any time you can need. There would be a resolution which you will be considering where you have made certain findings that you agree that this is something that the city should get take part in because of the need for this type of development in the city. There's opportunities for jobs, there's opportunities for better quality of living, all those things will be part of the resolution. And then there is a separate, once you would consider and approve each resolution, then there is a report that the secretary will sign that just highlights what the elements were of the resolution, and then the secretary will make that report to the city council whenever we are on the agenda, which just happens to be tonight. So the project that we're talking about tonight is the redevelopment and reuse of former North Port Southern, or area of the, of familiar. Across several months ago, the Economic Development Board, as the commission for the city, took action to set up a economic development area and a zip application area specific with that park. And at the time, we were starting negotiations with the company that owns the city today, with the state, on their investment to turn that into, originally it was 34 apartments that they had just sold to 36 apartments. So they're investing a considerable amount of money to follow recap the existing building that actually built new construction around it. So the two of 36 apartments will be screwed together Monday around the 20th of April. So the Economic Development Board, once that tip was established, executed its pledge resolution on July 9th of last month, where we recommended charging 70% of the new property taxes generated through the project as a reimbursement back to Peru apartments, hell, I would say, each year for a period of 10 years. And so that is what you are considering today, with this resolution. And the fact that, you know, the reimbursement back to the developer, which encouraged them to make the investments, help with construction costs lower, the rent that may have to be charged because of construction costs, it's benefit the city by providing residence for members, potentially five, 10 jobs, and the back to the, actually to create more tax revenue than what is currently generated. So since this is the tip, Jim, the current structure that's on that is that the baseline of the tip, and you're saying 70% of the new, all the property.
70% of, and a new, yeah.
The base says, but whatever it is today, it then used to go to the tax, to the city, to the city's general. You know approximately what their projected investments are going to be.
Four million.
Four million. And I think the other day, we were looking at it, I think maybe it generates somewhere maybe $4,000 a year.
Yeah, right now, I'll just jump in there, yeah, $3,300 bucks a year right now. But if, if we use $4 million, then it will probably mean about $28,000 would be 70% or $40,000 total in additional taxes each year.
So, and again, it reuses, yeah, of very important practice of portion of the city. So that is basically what's on the page, the one, the chairperson, the board, the board, the chairman of the commission, is just hoping out to the public and see if they have any questions or questions.
Just open to the public. Any comments, questions for Jim?
Again, these are market-based apartments, as far as the, so it's not so, so it's, it's just going to carry over in the event of sale, and it'll tighten up parts of, like, you know.
Can the council chime in on a question?
Yeah, you right now, you're part of the public.
Okay. What would be the rental fees, Jim, at this, the projected rental fees? Everybody have an idea?
I have a project on these, because I think about close with what Wollbach River Equities are. Again, though, the difference is, Wollbach River Equities really doesn't have a studio.
Yeah.
You know, they do have one bedroom and two bedroom, but from what we understand, it'd be similar to Wollbach River Equities.
So you're saying it could be a one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
Or it could be a studio.
Studio, one-bedroom.
Studio, yeah.
Right.
I have a question, too. How do we come up, you know, you, just using $4 million, that's $40,000 a year, 70% of that is $28,000, over 10 years, that's $280,000. How do we come up with that 70%? You know, is there some number that's tied to that $280,000 in terms of their investment? Or how does that, was that arrived at?
Well, normally, what happens is a negotiation. So we didn't automatically start off at 70% offering back to the company. That's what they requested, make a project feasible for them. And 70% is fairly consistent with what we've done with other tip reimbursements that we've done, such as One South Broadway, the, what used to be Seven Pillars, all of those other developments. So it's basically, and again, we use $4 million, but $4 million is what we think that's their investment, not necessarily what we assess value.
Yeah.
So if the assessor says that, no, the assessment only, it's not 4 million, it's 3 million.
Yeah, it's going to be a.
Then all we do is reimburse them back 70% based on whatever taxes are that they pay because of the allocation.
Yeah.
So it could be more, it could be less.
Yeah.
On the assessor.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if there was some magic number that they were trying to hit in, in terms of covering their, you know, their development costs.
Yeah, their construction costs is, is kind of the, when you look at residential apartments, it's more along the lines of what's projected income, what's projected cost, what's cost financing, how do all those match up? Where do I have, kind of the deficit that I have to make up? And that's where this thing.
Okay.
So. And again, because it's a tip, this is only on the new, only on the new assessment.
Yeah, the, yeah, the incremental assessed value.
So, yeah, and also the fact of reassessment and those kind of things, if there is a reassessment, then whatever increases due to that reassessment goes to the base, and not necessarily is that.
And then, of course, the 30% goes into the TIF fund. It doesn't come back to the, it doesn't come back to the city, but it goes there for management buy, you know, for economic development projects.
Right. It's how we're able to do things like the alleyway projects, how we support rediscovered downtown Peru with side improvement programs, how we help support festivals, and those kinds of things. Which you basically may not be able to do, which is general revenues, especially the tax dollars moving forward. So are there any other questions?
Jim, just curious, if, if we're looking at 4 million a year, so, okay, why do I have 4 million a year here?
That is what the investment is by the developer.
Okay, the developer, okay, I see. Okay, the developer.
Right.
Yeah.
So if there's no other questions.
So we need a motion to approve a resolution for Peru Housing LLC.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn. Whoa, wait up the thing. Now you also need, now you also need to make a motion to go ahead and authorize the secretary to sign this report, so that then she, she delivers to the city council.
We have a first, I'll, can I second?
Yep.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay.
I, I will say to the public, if they hear the term Oakdale Flats, that's this project. It's just owned by the group, Peru Housing LLC.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 5:43. We need a second for that. Okay, meeting adjourned.
In time.
5:44.
5:44.
That's been broke for over a month.
Yeah, it's been still like that the last month or so, I think. My iPhone's pretty, you have an iPhone, don't you?
Yeah, my iPhone.
Mine's 5:44.
Chair, your name is the last name.
Hi, Drew.
Jim, what's, Jim, what was the official name of the, of your committee here?
The official name.
DDC.
Just too busy to. Make it come down there.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Roberts. You heard that sound, but it was Dr. Roberts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you need that to me today.
Okay.
I think I got it.
I think I've got it.
Is this one the same as this?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's something different.
Yeah.
Hey, good question. Is this cut off here? Do you know what that's for? Yeah, I, of course, we're.
I'll call this special meeting to order, the city approved common council and Peru city hall council chambers. We have a roll call, please.
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Saad Duchney?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ori?
Here.
Thank you. This special meeting is to discuss additional appropriation resolution number 13-2025 for additional funds which need to be appropriated. Council, you have that list in front of you. You have any questions that we could answer for you regarding these appropriation amounts?
I think with the added notes that Andrea provided on that resolution page, that was very helpful.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if everybody had the additional notes or just me, but if you all have them, you understand or at least have a explanation of what the funds are going for. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about those.
I do have a question about the generator, the city hall generator, you know, 51,000, just because of the size of that, is that to replace the existing generator that's, is it several years old?
Yeah, the existing generator was installed when this building was built in 85. It hasn't functioned for many years. Its original design was to power the 911 dispatch center when it was located in this building. It stopped working and it was never replaced. So should we have any kind of a power outage citywide, city hall would have no electricity. So even though most of the command center, if you will, would be handled maybe out at the sheriff's department or somewhere else, fire department, if they had power, we still believe we need some electricity here in the city, in the city hall. This generator is not designed to power the entire building, simply would require something much larger, but it will give us power on the downstairs level should we need it.
The only other thing, I, I know that Chief Feller had talked about the laptops and that we've got in here, the additional replacement of laptops and, where's that money coming from again?
The CEDAT fund.
CEDAT fund. That's a big chunk. And I assume that in future years, we'll try to, try to budget for that in our, in our normal budget, you know. Oh, he's not here. Yeah, but I assume it was unexpected, so.
That's because the other ones with that big update that's coming.
Yeah.
So it couldn't really.
Okay. I don't have any other questions myself.
I was curious, Mayor, the animal control gate opener, is that just, moving toward, is it electric?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah, currently there is a manual gate there.
Okay.
This would add a, an opener to that gate to automatically open it and close it. It'll also have a keypad next to the entrance. So if the police, for example, had to go up there for any reason, they would have access to that. And then, of course, in the vehicles that the animal control personnel drive, they would have a remote opener as well.
Sounds like a good idea.
I, I have one more question. Enterprise fleet, the, the dollars, the 91 for that, is that like for, what, what does that represent?
I'm only putting 91 in there because right now, we don't know how much we're getting for our trade-ins.
So that.
So it's kind of a, a plug number.
And that represents, that 91 represents our cost for purchasing new vehicles?
Correct.
And.
But we're, we'll have a trade-in value, but right now, we don't know the trade-in value because they haven't taken the mileage or the VIN numbers for our vehicles to sell them. So once we get that, the 91,000 will probably be maybe 25,000. But I wanted to earmark something in there so that way, when the cars start coming in, we're not having to hold off on actually getting a car because we don't have the funds.
We'll have some, something set up as, as we enter into that program so that each month, we're going to have an expenditure to them or whenever there's, you know, how does that, how does that reflected, will we, I'm just trying to understand why we have something designated, you know, here for enterprise fleet management, will we have expenditure, will we have a budget and expenditures each month, will we have like a fleet management fund?
Yes, next year we will.
Next, in, next year, we're kind of, yeah, okay, I'm with you. So this year, we're basically, since we started at two-thirds of the way through the year, we're basically just kind of handling it this way until we can address it on a full-budget situation next year.
Correct, and we probably won't have all the vehicles this year.
Yeah.
They're just going to come in sporadically. I know Animal Controls is supposed to be here this month, so we haven't even started.
And we're still working that out.
Yes.
On where they land and blah, blah, blah.
Right, and our trade-ins and, and all of that. So when his comes in, we'll have to start the payment on his without having his vehicle sold yet.
Gotcha.
How did they choose what ones they're going to do first?
We started with the oldest.
Okay.
And then we also chose two of the newer vehicles that, like, Animal Control has a 2500. That's a vehicle that's way too big for Animal Control.
Mm-hmm.
It has great resale, low miles, so we decided to get rid of that while the resale was high. So he's going to get a 1500. The topper on it will fit his new vehicle, so we're sizing down and getting a better retail, resale value while the miles were low.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Mayor had another question.
Yes, sir.
Looking on the first page, the golf course, the upgrade drainage golf course system, how, what's the status of the system at this point?
I'm sorry, which system?
The, the golf course drainage system?
Drainage or irrigation?
Yeah.
Drainage.
What is our status now with that? How are we doing with that?
We are working on upgrading the drainage system at the golf course at the same time that they're installing a new irrigation system at the golf course. The irrigation system is about half-finished.
Okay.
So we expect that to be done sometime in September.
Okay. Thank you.
But drainage, we are working on that as we're working on the irrigation as well. Any more questions from the council?
Yeah, I just drove by the Canal Street today, Mayor.
The which?
I, I drove by the Canal Street today.
Yes, sir.
Down, and how, is the splash lit, the park, is that up and running?
Not yet.
Okay, we're getting there, though.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay.
We have a walk list, walkthrough checklist on the 14th.
Yeah.
And then soon after that, we hope to open it officially.
Okay. Yeah, I was glad to see that.
Thank you. If there are no more questions on resolution 13-2025, we will revisit it during our regularly scheduled meeting, starting at 6 o'clock. If there are no other questions, I'll adjourn this 5:45 special meeting, we'll reconvene It is 6:00 P.M., Monday, August 4th, 2025. I'll call this regular meeting to order, the city approved common council, Peru city hall council chambers. Be it pleased, rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Andrea Noonan, and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for your blessings upon.
Father, we thank you for your blessings upon us. We pray that you would bless this meeting tonight. Or we pray that you would fill the council's mind with wisdom and understanding as they make decisions for our city. We pray for our mayor, for his family, for our city attorney, our city clerk. Or we pray for all of the committees and boards that serve and make decisions for this city, that you would bless them. I ask that you would bless the economy of our city. And Lord, as our students are going back to school this week, we pray for all of the school staff and all of the students. Lord, that they would have a safe and healthy school year. And we give you thanks for all of this, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Saad Duchney?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ori?
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is reading and correcting of them, or corrections of the minutes from our regular meeting on July seventh.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and adopt the minutes as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Second.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll get into the committee liaison reports. Councilman Murphy?
So, the parks board met on seven-ten. I was unfortunately unable to attend, but I did catch up. The golf clubhouse is now authorized to sell beer and began on seven-two. They are continuing upgrades and repairs. Golf course irrigation has started. There are some drainage issues that they are working on and with the parks. The Riverwalk bathrooms are nearly complete, and the splash pad will be scheduled to open later this month.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ori?
Yes, so the Civic Center met last week. We had decided on the plaques for the Giving Tree for those who have donated to that. And then, also discussed further on the fall event that we're gonna have with some food trucks there. The plan commission did not meet. And then, I did meet with my, with the new appointment of the Peru EDC Board to discuss the Peru Apartments project.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, for the month of July, the fire department had a total of ninety-seven runs. They had nine fires, sixty-two medical, and twenty-six calls for service. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilman Fisher?
Attended the Board of Works meeting on July fifteenth, where they accepted bids, reviewed temporary street closures, alley closures, and approved events and police and fire personnel changes. And I went to the Peru Utilities Board meeting on July sixteenth as the city council liaison to that. Listened to them discuss various issues like the long-term control plan, any power outages, and other kinds of Peru Utilities activities that are going on right now. Miami County Economic Development, went to their board meeting on July ninth to listen to the various status updates on project, economic development projects around the county and community. Attended the elected officials council meeting with Makita to discuss current projects and their status and the status of future projects there might be in the near future. Miami County Recycling District, went to that board meeting on July twenty-first. Well, and of course, they've moved with the video mandate, they've moved their meetings to the G.A.R. room at the courthouse. So, we reviewed minutes and claims and discussed vendor issues and the finished concrete apron project down on Logan Smart Road. Rediscovered downtown Peru, I'm also the liaison to that. And discussed second Saturday activities, Cole Porter Festival facade grant updates. That was on July seventeenth. Other, other meetings I went to, I go to the Miami County Commissioner meetings just to know what's going on there. Attended the park boards meeting to know what was going on with parks, golf course and clubhouse. And there were updates, as Randy said, updates from all of those areas on projects they have going on. The Accra Bat Alley Project, ribbon cutting was on July twelfth. Attended the groundbreaking for Dicky's Car Wash on West Main on July seventeen. And attended budget meetings for the, with the individual city departments along with the mayor, treasurer, and clerk treasurer at Baker Tilly Rep. That was just on July thirty-first.
Thank you. Councilman Saad Duchney?
Yeah, I also attended the public works meeting on Tuesday, July fifteenth. I just wanted to add, on September the sixth, there will be a closing, street closing on Cass and Miami Street. And Bazaar will be from nine A.M. to seven P.M. And there'll be some live entertainment there, too. Miami County Council met on July fifteenth. And the main two things I'd like to touch on, the demolition of the Gerson M. They have to remove the asbestos, came in at a hundred seventy-seven thousand for that project. And then, the council, the county council will be voting on the wheel tax. They have, the deadline is September first. So, it's currently twenty dollars. And, and that's the, that's the minimum, twenty. It could go up to eighty dollars maximum. So, they have to submit, you know, their decision by September first on the wheel tax. And then, I thought, this is really interesting. The Miami County Historical Society, just to give you an idea, they had a total of visitors for the month of June was four hundred seventy-four. Two hundred seventy-five for the Cole Porter Festival, which brought in three hundred seventy-six dollars. Two hundred fifty-seven during Cole Porter. The gift shop brought in five hundred ninety-five dollars. Three hundred ninety-four for the Cole Porter Festival. And then, the circus week from July fourteenth to the nineteenth, there were three hundred twenty-eight visitors and five hundred ninety dollars in donations and two hundred dollars in the gift shop. So, I thought that was kind of interesting. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Huber?
Talked to Kelly out at the airport today. The groundwork has been completed for the new hangar location, awaiting inspection from the state to be passed so they can move forward with what the construction plan is in the future. There will be no open house this summer, which is unfortunate, but weather caused that to be delayed or postponed, and they're not going to do it now till next year. The Animal Control, they did not have any spay or neuter for July due to lack of people that signed up and participated. So, nothing happened with that. Greg did say he was gonna have a couple of dogs down at second Saturday, this coming Saturday, from five to eight. And at this point, they've got two dogs out for adoption, but they do have a total of nine at the shelter. Street Department, nothing really to report there. He was, he said he's waiting for E and B to get on the job and get moving. So, there's been some delays on that. But hopefully, we'll get that going so people will be happy. And that is all I have.
I'll just interject, I think that, you know, I know that schools are opening up this week. So, hopefully, they, I'm assuming they've worked it out with the Grant Street Blair Pike project, piece of that project, worked it out with, that's gonna be a tough go with schools starting up. I'm sure they've worked it out.
Sure.
We have been delayed three times on the start of that project. They told me yesterday, Sunday, and some phone calls with them that they will start tomorrow. And they plan to have that Grant Street milled and repaved, maybe not restripped, but milled and repaved by Wednesday evening. Superintendent McCormick? That's all we know.
Oh, I didn't see you there.
Councilman Stevenson?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask, wanted to add a little detail? The society voted Beverly Parker in as director. So, if you need to contact the society, call Beverly, Beverly Parker's the new director.
Thank you. I do appreciate everybody participating in their different committees and reporting back to us every month. It's very helpful, so thank you. I will move to old business. Under old business, we have one item. It's the additional appropriation resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two-five, which we reviewed and discussed in the special meeting at five forty-five. Do we have a motion to consider?
I make a motion to consider Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
And roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion regarding Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two-five from the council?
Mayor, I just had one. I was just curious, I like the idea, five thousand dollars for hometown celebration. I think Andrea pointed that out. Is that for, like, during holiday events, you know, like Memorial Day or?
Primarily during the Fourth of July.
And Fourth, okay, Fourth of July, basically. Yeah, okay.
And also, we have money in there for movies in the park.
Okay.
That obviously is an expense as well.
Okay.
If there's no other questions or comments regarding Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two-five, I'd ask for a motion to adopt?
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
And roll call.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further under old business, we'll move to new business. First item is ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two-five and ordinance to amend ordinance six, two thousand fourteen. Do we have a motion to consider?
Make a motion we consider ordinance nineteen twenty-two-five?
Second.
And roll call.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Dan, could you please come forward to explain the amendments to this ordinance?
Sure. Ordinance nineteen has to do with, we used to do fire watch, like if the alarm system stuff would go down at, say, Square D, one of the nursing homes or something. And when the ordinance was originally written, it was that we could only provide it. Well, since then, there's different changes in statutes and codes and stuff. As long as they have a qualified person on site twenty-four-seven that reports to us, it's okay. So, the ordinance has been rewritten basically to say, if they can't supply fire watch, then we are to supply it for them at the rate of straight time and/or time and a half, whichever is greater. So, that's basically it for ordinance nineteen. It's just taken out basically one sentence to where it's just not up to Peru Fire. They can have their own in-house fire watch.
Do they have to be certified, chief?
They do not have to be certified, they just have to be knowledgeable. And basically, knowledgeable means they know who to call, they know which fire alarm to pull, and they know who they're talking to once we get there, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And I assume that once they've designated, that they reach out to you and let you know if they do have-
Yes, yes.
-that individual, and then, do you have conversations with them about, you know?
Yeah, basically, when we respond to a run and their system's down, then we talk to them at that time and find out who their designated fire watch person is. A lot of times, Corson's on site, so they'll remain their fire watch until they get the alarm up and running. A lot of times, just the maintenance guy, like at the nursing homes, stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, discussion regarding this? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt?
I make a motion we adopt ordinance nineteen twenty-two-five?
Second.
And roll call.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is ordinance twenty dash twenty-two-five and ordinance to amend ordinance forty nineteen eighty-nine. Do we have a motion to consider?
Make a motion we consider ordinance twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Roll call.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, this is also kind of a cleanup. We noticed it when we were going through some city codes with a new prospect that's coming to town about where we need to put their fire hydrants, what they said they had to say. This building that in particular is also gonna be sprinkled, so we looked at a couple of different things. We changed a long time ago to large diameter supply hose, which, that's a storage connection. And almost every building that's been built, well, it has been in Peru since probably the mid-eighties, that connection has been put on the side of the buildings, but we noticed our code does not meet that standard. It's the old two, two-and-a-halves with a weird thread. So, basically, that amends that to where we get the sprinkler connection where we want it, and it also puts it on the right angle and the height off the ground that we wanted for our large diameter relay. It also states in there, like down at seven oh one East Main, they have what we call stand pipes, which is nothing more than a vertical pipe inside the buildings that we can attach hoses to once we're on that floor. Well, we really didn't cover that in a lot of this ordinance either. The new one does, where it has to be a certain size, and it also has to have a shut-off valve. Because once we charge those, they're charged, we'd have to shut it clear back down if we want to take the hose off. So, that's the change on the stand pipes, the fire hydrants. Last year, when we bought the new ladder truck and the two new engines, we went away from ordering these trucks with the specific threads that used to be on every truck. That we're paying a pretty good size up charge to make that happen, plus it delays delivery on trucks. And the big thing was, we tried to order more two-and-a-half inch hose, and we couldn't buy it because COVID and everything else, it was just, you couldn't get anything special. And then, we kind of went back into the pricing, we were paying almost seventy dollars a section more for that special thread. So, we, we decided, as a crew at the station, now's the time to change. Let's just make it two-and-a-half N S T, which is where it should have been forever. The only reason we had the weird thread was because of the railroads and the circus. Because they didn't want the railroads and the circus tapping into the fire hydrants. So, that's kind of where that, that law came from eons ago, and we've just always rolled with it. And this time, we've switched it around to where all of our hoses, and every department in the county, too, runs that two-and-a-half N S T. So, if somebody comes in to help us, we're not trying to get them adapters and stuff to hook into the hydrants. The storage connection on the hydrant, we now, on our five-inch L D H, we pull it off the back of the truck, and that storage connection is right there. So, we can spin it off the hydrant and connect it, we don't have to put an adapter or anything on. Now, this is only for hydrants moving forward. It's not, we're not gonna go replace every hydrant in the city. But this'll designate to us, we'll know when we see that storage connection on there, that it's also two-and-a-half inch N S T. So, we'll know what hydrant we're dealing with. In a normal fire flow, you never ever hook into the two-and-a-halves. We, we use it mainly to refill trucks at station. But if we were fighting a fire, we would use the big connection on the front, so.
Can I add, that is a standardized connection where the other one is the standard?
Yes.
And these hydrants, they can go down the east- And these hydrants, they can go down the utility supply and buy, not have to custom order them?
Yeah, I did talk to utility supply on that, and it's about four to six weeks to get one like we have now, to where if we go with this other one, they basically can get them, you know, within two or three days, so.
So the other one, it'll take care of all the new construction from here, if I could drive stand pipe, it'll match that, and then any of the outside bibs will match as well?
Yes, yep. It'll just standardize everything, and there again, I was in code enforcement for a lot of years. I thought these rules had gotten changed until I looked at city codes the other day, and I'm like, mm, this never got changed when we were talking to a, a person coming in wanting to build something.
So chief, from fiscal impact to the city, is, is there any on this, with this, or?
It's actually cheaper for the fire department to go this way. The city utilities, the hydrants are going to be a little more expensive to go with the stores and the two and a half, but a lot of that cost is borne on the contractor, you know? If they're putting in the hydrants, they're buying hydrants past the first hundred and fifty feet, so.
Okay.
And I think if they get into this program and they buy more hydrants like this, they'll get a better, better deal, so it won't be that much more expensive.
Okay.
Thank you.
One last thing, chief, I wanted to ask you. You said you're not going to replace the, all the hydrants. I know there's, there's a lot of them out there.
Mm-hmm.
But are you talking about, those hydrants are functional?
Mm-hmm.
And will you be replacing some of the parts or, or not?
No, if, say, somebody veers off down there at Fifth and Canal, or Fifth and, and one of the cross streets, I'm sorry, and they hit the hydrant tonight, and if we adopt this ordinance, the new hydrant that'll go back in there will be the stores and the two and a halves.
Okay, that, okay.
They'll keep the adapter in the truck?
Yeah, we have all the adapters in the truck. We're set up with bags in the back of the truck. When they get off to hook that hydrant, they have all the tools and all the adapters that they need, they're deciding on how they're going to hook it up.
Yeah.
And that's another thing that we changed a couple of years ago. We used to have this fifty to seventy-five pound thing hanging up, eight foot off the ground, and you'd yank it off the back of the truck. Well, if you're not watching, you could take it in the head or wherever, and so now, we, we don't have that big wad of stuff up there that's in a bag, and we pull it out of a compartment.
Okay. So the different connection, are they that visible to where when you pull up, you know by looking at that hydrant?
Yes.
What it's going to take before you even go up to?
Yeah, we'll know, and I got some pictures of the stores hydrant here. Everybody knows what the normal, you know, your normal fire hydrant looks like. That'll just be what the new one looks like.
Is it this, this connection over here, is that what you're referring?
Yes, yep, connection in front there.
Thank you.
Is what we're looking at.
Any further questions or discussions regarding this? The chief can answer. If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Soduchny?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next item under new business is a presentation by Makita, financial agreement between Peru Apartments LLC and the City of Peru.
Oh, good evening. First, before we get into the financial agreement and the proposed incentive that I want to ask for your consideration tonight, prior to this meeting, the Peru Economic Development Commission met to review and make a recommendation to the council on whether or not you should enter into this conditional project expenditure agreement concerning the rehabilitation and reuse of the former Norfolk Southern Dorm area. And the secretary, your appointee to the Peru Redevelopment Commission is Erica, so Erica, if you want to go ahead and report on what happened at the commission meeting at five thirty?
Yes, so the City of Peru E D C held a public hearing this evening on the proposed TIF reimbursement to the Peru Apartments LLC for the rehab of the former Norfolk Southern dormitory. The commission is recommending a seventy percent reimbursement of real property taxes generated by the project into the NSF TIF allocation fund for a period of ten years. There is existing infrastructure to support the project. It will create five to ten new jobs that will be able to be retained, and the project will not have an adverse effect on any similar existing in the city, so, and then the, it's also on the new construction, not the existing structure.
Yeah. Thank you, Erica. So what this is tonight, I'm asking the council to consider a couple of different things that tie this project all together. And again, this is for the rehabilitation reuse of the former Norfolk, Norfolk Southern dormitory area over in Oakdale subdivision within the city. As you all know, that building, for quite some time, has needed some restoration and improvements. About a year or more ago, we started working with a developer that was interested in acquiring that property and turning it into apartment units, new apartment units, both a mix of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. The Miami County Economic Development Authority has the Redevelopment Commission for the city, took action back on, oh, it's been several months ago, to establish that area as a separate allocation area, TIF allocation area within the city limits. On July ninth of this year, the Economic Development Authority took action to propose a pledge of seventy percent of the real property taxes generated through the new investment into the property reimbursed back at seventy percent for each year for a period of ten years, as Erica explained, the Redevelopment Commission met and approved. So this reimbursement is an economic development tool, similar to an abatement, but it consists of about three different documents. The first one is what's called a condit, conditional project expenditure agreement, and it's actually a pledge of the City of Peru to reimburse back the developer, in this case, Peru Apartments LLC, that seventy percent each year for a period of ten years. Again, this is only on the new assessed value created by the project. What already is the base assessed value and the taxes that are paid on that base continue to go to the taxing units. The only thing that is captured is that incremental assessed value. Based on that incremental assessed value, this conditional project expenditure agreement is basically just a pledge that actually acts as a bond between the City of Peru and Peru Apartments LLC. That conditional expenditure agreement, then, is also supported by what is called a financial agreement, and I think you have copies of each one of these. This financial, financial agreement also is between the City of Peru and Peru Apartments LLC. The financial agreement just lays out the process. So again, as Peru Apartments LLC pays its real property taxes every year, twice a year, the, the portion of that property tax that gets, is based on the new assessed value, gets deposited into the allocation fund. Once it's in the allocation fund, then this agreement allows us, as the Redevelopment Commission, to cut a check to compute what seventy percent is and cut the check and reimburse them back on a semi-annual basis. Again, this does not create or have any other obligation of the city. It's totally based on the taxes paid by the taxpayer, in this case, Peru Apartments LLC. If for some reason they do not pay their property taxes, then there's no reimbursement. And again, this is for a period of ten years. The final document that you have in front of you is actually an ordinance, ordinance number eighteen, and basically, this kind of wraps up the whole process. It references back the financial agreement, it references back the conditional expenditure agreement, it makes, it identifies the action that the Economic Development Authority took to approve a pledge resolution, takes into account what the Economic Development Commission held the public hearing and voted in support of the project. So this ordinance, then, actually confirms and approves the whole process.
Hey, Jim, I have a question, but make sure I understand. The seventy percent, so the people that are building this project, once it's built and end the new value, they're going to pay a hundred percent, which will be able to keep thirty percent of the new assessed value, they're going to get back their seventy percent.
Correct.
Agreed, okay.
That thirty percent goes into the, stays within the allocation fund?
Okay.
To use for various projects, such as the alleyway projects in downtown, helps fund rediscover downtown Peru.
I just wanted to know that it was on the new assessed value?
It's only on the new assessed value. The base assessed value and the taxes that are generated from that base assessed value continues to go to the taxing units, just as if the TIF wasn't established. Thank you.
And, and just for point of information, currently, that, that one and a half acres pays thirty-three hundred dollars approximately a year in terms of taxes, which we will continue to get. So as Bob said, this is just the incremental assessment over and above that.
And the use of these seventy percent that's going back to the developer is to help offset site improvement costs over all construction costs, just the cost of, of constructing the facility.
Which, as you said in your meeting, that's, you came up with that number through negotiations with the developer?
Well, and it's about four million, is what the developer suggests would be their investment. What actually becomes the assessed value, then, is depending on the county assessor.
Right.
So whatever they assess it at, if, for example, the assessor comes back and only assesses it at three million, then the, the Peru Apartments LLC only gets back seventy percent, then, of the taxes paid on three million.
And for the public's information, we say Peru Apartments LLC, which there is one over by B and K, that's totally separate. This will be named Oakdale Flats, and there'll be thirty-six apartments in that project. So you'll hear the term publicly, Oakdale Flats.
So what I would recommend, unless there's any other questions and subject to legal council's approval, is I would suggest maybe a motion that would cover both the financing agreement and the conditional expenditure agreement, or do you want to do each one separately?
I'd do each one separate.
Okay.
We thought to consider this, correct? We didn't consider this to start with.
I'm sorry.
We didn't consider this to start with, did we, Adam?
No, no, this was just Jim's explanation and presentation.
Okay.
We have an ordinance here for your consideration coming up.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the entering into of a conditional project expenditure agreement, the City of Peru, Indiana, Peru Apartments LLC, and the disposition for the proceeds thereof to Peru Apartments LLC, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. Do we have a motion to consider?
Make a motion, we consider ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-five?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Soduchny?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any further discussions or questions that we could answer?
I just want to make a comment. I, I've said this all along, I'm pumped about this project, but there's seventeen point nine acres behind it, the woods, that, there's a lot of crazy stuff that goes on out there, so hopefully, the developer of this project will somehow separate their, their project from that, so that, you know, it doesn't really detract from, from this very good-looking project.
I agree. It is a very good-looking project. Any more comments or questions? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty-five?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Soduchny?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further under old business, we'll move to communications. Do we have any communications from the council?
I'd just like to extend to Superintendent McCormick and the Peru Community Schools, good luck on the start of the new school year.
Thank you. Any comments or communication from the audience? Yes, sir.
I want to thank our leadership team, had a great meeting at Pacific Center a couple of months ago, very nice evening. I want to thank Chief Dane, Chief Feller. We had a need to meet about thirty-five of our teachers and our leadership team last week, and we didn't really have the space, appropriate space in our school district, and so a few emails and phone calls, and we met out at County Sheriff's Office Building, had a great meeting last week. I want to thank Mayor Sturz, he always reaches out if there's something that's going to impact the schools, like the Blair Point paving, those type of things. I really appreciate him reaching out and that open line of communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience?
You guys, you want to speak for the V G A appointee?
I had passed on a suggestion to the mayor, and I'm not sure where we're at on that, so.
Hard to find volunteers.
There's one sitting right next to him.
Mayor?
Yes.
We do need to get the council's approval for the financial agreement.
And where is that on our agenda? Is that an ordinance that they have to approve, or is?
It's just, they just need to approve you, you signing the financial agreement.
Does the council approve the mayor signing the financial agreement?
Do we have to make a motion?
That's nothing on?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the financial agreement with Peru Housing LLC.
Second.
And roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Soduchny?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, any motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.